This meeting is ordered to start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing on our agenda is a police department cops grant application school resource officer. That was pulled at the last minute. It isn't ready for presentation.
That's correct.
Will be in the future. So the next thing on the agenda is a presentation by AT&amp;T.
Do you want to recognize Counselor Kenny to introduce them?
I can. Recognize Joe Kenny, our executive counselor, has joined us today.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and for selecting Littleton. A while back, there was a big discussion about this thing called FirstNet, kind of the first responder network authority that was established in Washington several years ago. But the whole premise of it was to try to build a communication interoperability system for our first responders. And so AT&amp;T got the contract, who are beginning the presentation here this evening. So it's roughly nationwide, a $6.5 billion contract. And over that 25-year period of the contract, AT&amp;T hopes to push in probably about, I think it's close to the $40 billion. But I would say that at the time, New Hampshire was kind of hedging its bets on whether or not it was going to opt in with AT&amp;T. And I was kind of persistent in saying that we should because as a result, there's going to be a build out of 48 towers up north, whether it's a current tower or a tower to be built for the next four years. And with that in mind, there's a potential of maybe a commercial activity on those towers, which would only benefit the North Country. So did I get it right?
Absolutely.
I haven't talked this topic for a few months, but it's been really a passion of mine because I saw the benefits to the North Country, in particular, the first responder community. It is the piece of communications that the first responders need. Currently, they're on a kind of a commercial system where this is going to be really dedicated to them. And we know in the North Country that we need all the communication we can get for our first responders. So with that, I'll shut up and sit down.
Thank you.
Is that good? Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Select Board for allowing us the 15 minutes to give you an update. And Counselor, thank you again for your support over the past almost two years now. So we have been out with the state, public safety, for really since January 1st, meeting with groups like this, but really public safety related. And we've got some feedback that there's a lot of questions coming from non-public safety type, and we thought that we should address those questions in an environment like this. So this is really our first outreach. We did sit with the Public Utility Commission, but we hope to sit with the regional planning commissions and more groups like this, including the Chamber. So really because there is a benefit to what we're doing for public safety to our commercial customers. And I've been with the company for 29 years in Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, and most of those years, we've been pushing, pushing, pushing to get a better network in the northern part of New England. And finally, it's here. The business case still isn't here, but because we won the FirstNet contract with the federal government, we've committed $40 billion over the next 25 years. We got $6.5 billion from the federal government. We've worked for the last 18 months with the state of New Hampshire, public safety, to identify where we need to increase our coverage. And I will say that it's throughout the state we need to improve, but the bulk of it is from the White Mountains right up through to the Canadian border. And that's a significant part of our build. So I'm going to do the next slide. I am not a New Hampshire resident. I live in Portland, Maine, but I do cover and have for many years Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont for government affairs and sort of external affairs. I just want to give a real quick update on what we look like here in New Hampshire today. Almost 200 employees. We've got 300-plus retirees. Our main business office here in New Hampshire is in Nashua. We've got 76 retail locations, 10 of which are company-owned retail. The others are agents and so forth. About $8 million generated in state and local taxes last year, and $72 million spent on goods and services purchased from New Hampshire-based suppliers. We have typically spent $20 to $25 million a year on our network here in New Hampshire. We currently cover about 80% of the geography. I'll get to what FirstNet will do here in a minute. We have done a huge build since 2009 with 120-plus towers. We have about 340 towers with a big plan to increase that substantially. And we have also since 2013 done an overlay of our existing network with what's called LTE, 4G LTE. If you turn on a smartphone, you'll see LTE, not in all the areas locally here, but LTE is the high-speed internet and voice that goes along with it. So there's lots of areas out here that you don't get any services, lots of areas where you still get 3G. The 700 overlay changes that completely and expands without building an additional site our coverage footprint at each and every site. Not anything to do with the FirstNet build, but we also own DirecTV. And I don't know how many of you know that we have an uplink facility. The main one is in New Hampton, and that's for the entire East Coast and Puerto Rico. But we also have a backup station about a mile and a half from here, up on Eustace Mountain Road. And so that's a big installation for us. And again, everything is uplinked for the East Coast, goes to Denver, and then from there goes down into the single households via satellite. Next slide, please. So what is FirstNet? As the Counselor said, this is really for public safety. We are building a separate core network for public safety. This came out of the 9/11 Commission back in 2010. It was finally passed in 2012. FirstNet was developed. There was a bidding process RFP put out. AT&amp;T was awarded in 2017. Basically, we had been working with each state until December, through December of last year, when each state had to either opt in and let AT&amp;T do it, or do it on their own. All 50 states, New Hampshire almost went the other way, and they did for about 60 days, but they came back. And all of the territories actually opted in. So this is our deal for public safety. And we are currently working today on the network and all of the bells and whistles and network security, cybersecurity, customer service, the devices, the apps that go with FirstNet. Next slide, please. So what is FirstNet? It's a private-public partnership between the federal government, FirstNet, and AT&amp;T. FirstNet provided AT&amp;T with, or I should say, they provided public safety with 20 megahertz of spectrum. The program management, they will be managing the FirstNet network. They have public safety experience. AT&amp;T brings to the table $180 billion infrastructure across the country. $40 billion is what we've committed over the 25 years. And of course, our technology and innovation, our expertise, we're in the networking business and have been for 113 years. Next slide, please. So the FirstNet value proposition. These are all of the different things. I'm going to focus on coverage because that's what you folks here care about. But as far as public safety is concerned, priority and preemption, which I'll let you know what that is, that's a big deal. Again, this came out of the 9/11 Commission. When 9/11 happened in New York, communications went down. Everybody was calling on all of the commercial networks, and public safety could not communicate. It happened again at the Boston bombing, Boston Marathon bombing. And it happened last week in Lawrence, Massachusetts, when a lot of the southern border, New Hampshire, public safety, EMS, fire, police went down to help out, and nobody could communicate with one another because they're all on different frequencies. And it wasn't that the network was jammed, although it was at times, and there were a few sites that went down. There was just no communication. So this is a communication, priority and preemption, interoperability, doesn't matter whether Canada comes down, California comes in, whatever it may be, everybody will be able to communicate on the same frequency. Next slide, please. So priority and preemption. This network will give priority and preemption to public safety. Again, I just explained if the network gets jammed up, our commercial customers get pushed down to a different frequency, band 14, and whatever other band is necessary will stay available to public safety, and they will be able to communicate without the interference of the other network, the other subscribers on the network. So that's what priority and preemption is. Next slide, please. So you've got an incident, elevated priority status and improved communications happens. First responders arrive on the scene. They begin to resolve the situation. Then you get the backup. You get the Red Cross might come in. You get the local power companies to maybe turn off the power, cut down trees, whatever it may be. They're the extended primary, so they would get priority and preemption. And then you get the incident that's resolved. So that's sort of how you go from start to finish on one of these incidents with a communications piece. Next slide, please. This is an example of everything's fine. This is a normal network functioning. There's no stress on the network to speak of. You've got your primary, police, fire, EMS using the system, the extended primary using the system, our commercial customers, everybody's happy, there's no issues with the network. Next slide, please. You've got a crisis that occurs. Still, the network is performing pretty well, but you've got response from the police, fire, EMS, extended primary is still out there, commercial customers still out there. You know, the network is doing pretty well so far. The crisis continues. Next slide, please. So it worsens, and all of a sudden, there's some problems with the network. There's, you know, people using it. There may be a couple of sites down, so other sites had to pull in and pick up the coverage. So there's more stress on the network. The commercial customers start to get pushed back to other bands, public safety, which is the primary, and extended primary, which is maybe the power company, you know, hospital personnel, public transportation, maybe the local school using buses to evacuate, depending on the circumstances. All are extended primary. Their communication stays in place. And next slide, please. So that's the situation. Now you're at a situation where there's no room for the commercial users. That's been pushed down. This is a big deal. You know, it's a 9/11-type situation, or you know, a big forest fire up here, the Boston bombing, marathon bombing, something like that. So public safety stays working, and the commercial customers are at a lock. So priority and preemption for public safety. Next slide, please. So the coverage. This is what we, 2.7 million square miles. This is what we are looking at with our network at the end of the next four years. It was a five-year plan. So we're expected to cover 99% of the geography in the United States with this network. Next slide, please. So what does all of this mean, this rushed version of what FirstNet is? What it means here in New Hampshire, and again, everything that I'm talking about that we're doing for public safety, we're building a core network for public safety at the same time building out our commercial network. So although they're two separate networks, public safety will always have the priority and preemption. They'll always be on their own network. Our commercial customers will experience and benefit from the exact same footprint. So 99, over 99% of the population in New Hampshire will be covered. This is in three and a half more years out of the five-year contract. We've got three and a half years left. 96% of the geography in the state will be covered. We've worked with some roaming partners up here. There's a company called Great North Woods Wireless that has 14 sites that we are connected to. Those are on for data, and voice will follow here very shortly. There's another company up here that was a roaming partner that had a dozen sites. We bought them last week, and we will overlay that network with the LTE, 4G LTE, Voice Over LTE, and the band 14. Again, those will be ready for public safety right out of the gate, but with band 14 and LTE over the next six to eight months. So that's happening. So again, public safety and commercial customers both benefit. With expanded coverage comes more of our distribution right now. If you want to buy an AT&amp;T phone, you've got to go to Concord or South. So with this expanded coverage comes expanded distribution. We'll be opening up stores in Littleton, Berlin, Gorm, all over the North Country. We'll also be using our agents to get out into some of the smaller communities. So there'll be distribution. And I can't stress this enough, although I don't like it, but with what we're doing, our competition, and that's US Air, it's the Sprint, T-Mobile that are going to be one most likely, Verizon, are not going to sit back and let us do what we're doing. So they're going to follow. When we build a tower, they're going to put their equipment on it, and everybody's going to benefit. And the North Country, New Hampshire, is going to benefit. So there's going to be more competition and more choices. Next slide. So I say 96% of the state. There's 4% that's not going to be covered. There's some white space, and honestly, most of that white space is up in this area. This is how we're going to cover that. We're going to cover the highways. We're going to cover over 99% of the population. But if you've got a snowmobile, or you've got a hiker, you've got a situation where communications goes down, there will be three of these units in the state, one of which will be right in our facility at DirecTV in New Hampton. And that's the one that we will own and manage. There'll be two others that the state owns, and I'm sure they'll have one up here and one probably down south. So this is a situation where you can drive into an area, no coverage, put up the mask, connect to the satellite, turn on the communications, and all of a sudden, you've got 4G LTE for a half, depends on the terrain, but you know, say a mile in diameter. So again, you can look for people who have cell phones with that technology. You can communicate. Public safety will be there and communicate. Next slide. So that's it. Hopefully, I didn't go over the 15 minutes. And I guess there'll be questions, time for questions later on?
Yeah, we'll have questions in the public input session, which is near the end of the agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report, which is going to include a number of things, right?
Yep.
First, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the statistical revaluation.
Really?
And, yeah, we've had a lot of inquiries about that. In 2015, Littleton underwent a full statistical revaluation. Positive market changes since this last revaluation demonstrated that assessed values were growing in disparity from sales values, and they still are. Properties are consistently selling for higher than assessed values. The New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration utilizes sales reporting that reflects the difference between assessed and actual sales by an indicator called the sales ratio. It's kind of a health indicator for our assessment data. The sales ratio has been dropping quickly. You can see that's in the blue, the sales, our sales ratio from 2015 when we first had our statistical evaluation till this past year in 2017. So in order to proactively address the issue, we began exploring ways to resolve this for this year. And we determined that a full statistical revaluation in 2018 would help keep the sales ratio healthier and assist in keeping tax rates stable. The reevaluation is now complete, and our contracted assessor is conducting hearings with property owners to help them explore the new values. The gross assessed value, I had some numbers, but they're not officially set until all of the different appeals or hearings are done. I think initially, we had it in 2017 at 821,954,899, but that's pre-sales ratio application. That doesn't include current use discounts. It doesn't include veterans exemptions, all the different exemptions and credits. This year, an initial number has it over 900 million. But again, that's not going to be formally set until the Board of Assessors, which is the Board of Selectmen, receives the final report from the assessing firm. So the reevaluation will likely result in the New Hampshire Department of Revenue establishing a sales ratio closer to 100%, which results in us utilizing assessed values of parcels and potentially having a decreased tax rate. So when property values go up, typically, tax rates will have a corresponding effect. The three main impacts of a tax rate during tax rate setting time are expenses, revenues, and overall assessed value of the town. And I invited Andy Smith, our local real estate, regional real estate expert, just to talk about the market in general, so that people kind of understand the housing market and maybe commercial market to kind of understand why people's assessments have increased so drastically.
Good. I wasn't quite sure why I was invited, so. And just thought he wanted me to stand up here and take the knives instead of you guys.
Good start.
I talked to Andrew briefly, and he said the same thing. I mean, I get a lot of calls when towns get reassessed, and people say, my value went up 20% or 30%. Did the overall market go up that much? And it's hard to take that on a case-by-case basis. So I did bring some statistics that I can share with you. This first one is just, is a national graph, what's happened year over year. And through June, nationally, prices have gone up about 6.2% on the residential side. But just as it matters what town it's in, the next graph is how it's affected by the price range of the houses themselves. So the lower-priced homes have gone up 9%, 9.4%. Middle, low to middle, 8%. Middle to moderate, 7%. And the higher-value homes are 5.7%. So you can begin to see, you're really going to drill down. And then the last one is just the region. And so West Coast, mountains, Colorado, California, they're up almost 10%. New England is 5.41% year-over-year. And that's from the Federal Housing Finance Authority graph. We're about, when Andrew said, what's been the average for the last three years? It's been between 5% to 6% per year. But then it really depends on how big the house is, what the value is, and you've got to really drill down a little bit more than that. So and then the last one is just New Hampshire, and that's at 4.8% year-over-year. The other thing I brought to you is just also monthly indicators from the New Hampshire And this will be for the last four years. So at the end of December 2017, the change in single-family median sale price statewide was 8.4% in New Hampshire. 16, it was 6.4%. 15, 5.4%. And December of '14 was 3.3%. So the increases have gotten larger over the last four years. And lastly, I wanted to drill down to Grafton County and Coors County, which is about as particular as I could get quickly. And in 2017, residential homes in Grafton County went up 2.5%. Coors County actually went up 4.9%. Some people say we're northern Grafton, some people say we're southern Coors. So we're a little bit of both, I think, in Littleton. Let's see, Coors County in '16 went up 7.3%. Grafton, 8.3. '15 in Coors County, 2015, Coors County went up 15.9%. And Grafton went up 14.1. So they track pretty closely. And overall, I mean, if you're looking for an average for the last three years, it's somewhere around 5%.
Per year, though.
For Littleton.
Per year.
Per year. Yes. With that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but from a market standpoint, that's where we've been, and that's kind of where we're at. Commercial sales, they haven't, the commercial sales have certainly gone up and increased pretty well in the last two or three years. There's been some good activity, of course, on the metal. We're looking at, for the first time in a long time, we don't have enough industrial space, or warehouse space, or distribution space in town, so that's pushing the price up a little bit. But we don't have all that much inventory, so it's hard to say the prices have skyrocketed because we don't have anything for sale or for lease right now. I know that.
Good. If you don't mind sticking around, we do have a public input session near the end of the agenda. If you're pressed for time, I'll break the rules and allow them to go.
No, no, I'll be happy to follow the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, just a quick update on the Ammanusa and Saranac project. The sewer replacement of this project was completed on Friday, and now they're moving forward with drainage improvements and the, to be followed by the road and parking reconfiguration in Hardscape. And eventually, before the season's over, there's going to be a base coat of paving and some temporary lime painting so that there's not chaos in the River District over the winter. And then next year, the landscaping, the trees and plantings and all that is going to be in place. But we're moving forward and getting a lot of things done, and it's maintained schedule. Green Street paving, if you remember, this project was originally included as part of the Saranac and Ammanusa Street project. It was removed. We were able to do the project thanks to Bill Sargent and the highway crew for a lot cheaper than it would have been to keep it in the grant-funded project. The requirements are a lot less. So we did drainage improvements in the area and paved and, you know, regraded and paved and lined it up, and it looks great down there. It seems a lot more.
Let the record show the selectmen appreciate the extra effort of the highway department. Thank you.
Next up is the Sub Five project. We've been in planning with this since 2016. We now have the new introduction transportation permit in place. We have to do quite a bit of work in there right away on Union Street. And we received a notice to award from our grant lender, the State Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. And we awarded the project on Friday to J.A. McDonald and had our first preconstruction meeting. And they're going to start pretty much right away on Union Street. So they're going to work through, I believe it's November 17th, I think is when they're going to be out of the road. And they'll be taking a break from there until May. In May, they plan to start back up and get that project underway. We ran into a number of difficulties, including the hot construction market drove the prices up for the contract work, and we rebid to try to reconfigure it to try to get a better price. We came in almost the same, so we made some small adjustments of the scope and are getting this project moving. And I think that's all I have at this time.
That's it? That's all?
That's all, yeah.
Okay, we'll move to old business, and we, under old business, we have for the Select Board discussion, the agenda policy. As you know, there's been some controversy about that, some questions about that, and the selectmen as a group are revisiting it. I would open it up to either of you.
I guess I should go, since I asked this to be on the agenda to begin with a few weeks or two weeks ago. I spent a lot of time thinking about this issue. I expressed at the last meeting my concerns about the existing policy and the effect of implementation of the policy and what's been going on. I think, quite frankly, the last meeting is about as good an example as there is about why this policy's in place. I think if we follow the policy more... I think if we follow the policy more strictly, for lack of a better word, I think we'll have better luck with implementation of the policy. While I have the same misgivings I had at the last meeting, quite frankly, I'm looking at the policy, there's a couple of changes I think are worth putting in, but not to substantially change the issue of getting things on the agenda before we have, to have public comment on it, or having, or rather, having public comment only be to things that are on the agenda. As time goes by, I'm more comfortable with that. So I know now's not the time to make, take any action on it, but just to give you, everybody, a heads up on what my position is on it, I'm thinking that what we should be adding, a little bit of language that gives the chairman discretion to lengthen or shorten the public comment time allotment, and also make provisions for if we, if someone reaches out to get an item on the agenda, and it's after the Wednesday deadline before the public meeting, that we leave it, that the town manager has discretion on saying it's an urgent enough issue that we need to still get it on the agenda rather than have to wait potentially a whole nother month before it comes before the selectmen. But other than that, I think I'm more comfortable with staying with the agenda as it is, subject to maybe implementing those changes and having Tom Council review it to make sure it's still legal.
Good. Kara?
No, I would have to agree. I would, Littleton definitely is a town we share, we're transparent, we're open, and I think it's really important to have that space controlled, if you will. But if something does come up, I think it should be at your discretion, Skylar, and also at Andrew's.
Well, thank you. And as a reminder, I will reread the last sentence in the portion of the policy under the heading "Appointments." And that sentence reads, and I quote, "The only exceptions to this requirement," and it's referring to who can make an appointment. "The only exceptions to this requirement are in cases deemed to be of high importance by mutual agreement of the town manager and the chairman of the Select Board." So if someone has an issue that they want to get on the agenda, they should bring it to the town manager or the chairman of the Select Board, and that way they can get it on the agenda. That way they have the opportunity to get it on the agenda. I can tell you, as chairman of the Select Board, given the recent atmosphere in which we're living, it's probably going to be included, just because it should be. So therefore, I am going to speak for the two of you and say the policy, for now, will remain the same. And if someone wants to address our decision, they can do so in the public comment period. So we'll move on to New Business. You two okay with moving on?
Yeah, as I said, there is a little bit of language, I think, that should be added. But we'll do that later when we...
Well, I think maybe you're correct in that we'll run it by council first and just make sure we got our Ts crossed, Ises dotted.
And then vote on it.
Yep.
Gotcha.
So moving on to New Business, we have a presentation by the Energy Conservation Committee, which is Ron and Peter...
Oh, my honor.
And Bob. Take your choice, whoever wants to go, go.
Our entire committee is here, all three of us. We've been plugging to get additional members. We had signs down at the transfer station. Brian was kind enough to put those up. See, we've been pushing it from our end, but so far, I'll make one final appeal, you don't have to be an expert upon your mission. I am. So today, we want to talk to you about our observations in meeting with the department heads this year, which we've done every year for several years now. One thing I did want to mention, though, was, partly because of our numbers, this year we decided we were going to refocus a little bit away from trying to airtight every single building, municipal building, and our focus was more on education and information sharing. So we've done quite a bit of that with articles in the newspaper. We participated in workshops. We've been to a conference. We've been working with some contacts at the school to try and get the words around. The best example of that is the newsletter I presented out here before the meeting. It's called the Green Energy Times. It's a magazine across the entire New England, all six states. This summer, Bob O'Connor worked with management down at the Littleton Food Co-op, and he came up with an article on all of the energy efficiency aspects of the expansion that they concluded over there. That ran in the Courier, but Bob also submitted it to Green Energy Times, so for the first time ever, we had an article in. That's gotten notice in six states. I will say that in meeting with the department heads, they all are doing a really good job. They all seem to be very conscious of their energy consumption and trying to make the improvements. So I think we have a very good, very good leadership team there right now. We did visit all the departments and some sort of quasi-departments, libraries, senior center, wastewater treatment plant, park and recreation. So we visited everybody this year, and we did give you, hopefully you had a chance to look at, we sent you about a five-page wrap-up of our observations. But today, we'd like to go over just a one-page list of things that we would like to bring to your attention for consideration, either in 2018, if the budget were allowed, into year spending, or for 2019, the budget bill or possible warrant articles. We are not sponsoring a warrant article this year, but we would stand ready to support any department head that's wanting to bring something forward that had an energy aspect. So having said all of that, we'll turn it over to Chairman, Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about some ongoing projects that we're actively working at. One is the insulation and air sealing project at the Opera House. That was a 2017 town warrant article, had a 50% incentive through the regi funds administered by Eversource. We've gotten about halfway through that, but have gotten stuck by the requirements of the historical resources folks in Concord. Took a long time to get some answers at all. There was a change of personnel there, but now we understand that it's going to be difficult to do much in the uncompleted space on the Cottage Street level. So rather than pay money for a historical consultant to give us some ideas that may or may not even pass muster, it looks like we should probably just leave that alone. But then upstairs in the storage room that's adjacent to the tower conference room, which the expectation is to turn that into some rentable office space. It's a nice, it is a nice space, good windows out to the west, et cetera. And we, our contract did identify some insulation and air sealing there. We just want to make sure that what they're doing is not going to be at profits purposes with any finish work that might go on. So we haven't resolved that yet, but we hope to determine what can reasonably be done. We've talked to, even though he's not under contract yet, but I guess the Salmon Delilah architect and representative came last week, and we talked with him just to pick his brain about what could we reasonably do that wouldn't have to be taken apart when you do the actual renovation. So hopefully, we get that resolved shortly and wrap up what we can do. Won't be the whole thing, but we'll do as much as we can reasonably. The other thing that we're working on is the pellet heating system, which serves both the CPW garage and the fire station. It's working okay when it's working, but last winter, the two propane, backup propane systems took a lot more of a load, so propane uses up substantially, and the pellet use is way down compared to previous years. So the equipment itself is working fine, but there's some controls tweaking is necessary to allow the pellet system in a cold winter to, they ought to be cranking away just about 100% of the time at maximum, and the rest with propane. But it seems that the propane systems are grabbing a load and the pellet system is loafing. And right now, that doesn't hurt us because the price of propane and pellets is similar. There isn't the gap that existed when this project first was proposed. But I think everybody expects that we will return, you know, as soon as they figure out how to raise oil prices, the propane will go with it. And there will be a gap between pellets and propane, and we'd like to have this thing working as intended by them. So we haven't yet been able to get the attention of the experts in this area. We have, the trolling folks have reached out, but it's really the Yeton engineers and the Hebert contractor, they're the folks that would be able to look at this problem and help us solve it. So still working on that, and hopefully, it's just a controls change and not anything that requires new piping or anything like that. So, but we're keeping our attention on that so it doesn't get lost. Another project that we identified last spring was the air conditioners in the library that sit in the windows make it pretty hard over the winter to keep the place warm. So at the end of last winter, they did take those air conditioners out, put them in storage. And we, going to a conference, we were aware of an opening in the USDA grant program, a project that had gotten canceled, and it looked like we could jump in and maybe fill that gap. USDA decided, well, in all fairness, they should award it to people who are in line rather than a newcomer. So they have put us, our application, on the, on next year's agenda, and hopefully, that will be awarded, whether, I have to say, we, other than starting the process and moving along, it's the Town Manager's Consultant, NCIC, been very helpful with the grant writing itself, and the folks at the library also have been kicking up and filling in details and so on. Don't know whether they will come forward with a warrant article for the town's portion. The grant for Littleton would be like 50, 55% is what they would cover, so it's a good portion of the cost. But that other half, whether they have it in their budget to cover or whether they need a warrant article is yet to be determined. But what would be our warrant article that will certainly stand up in support of, it's a heat pump-based system, which is about twice as efficient as the 20-year-old window air conditioners. So there's that savings, but also these units can do some heating as well. So in the spring and the fall shoulder season where it's cold in the morning, but then hot in the afternoon, the steam system doesn't do very well in that kind of a service. So these units should be able to do nicely during the spring and the fall to provide the heat in the morning hours, but then be shut off and have the steam system be operating through the winter months. So I think it'll be an energy-saving addition, but also a much better comfort level for occupants of the library. That same system would be a good application at the fire station. They have some internal, they have some sleeping rooms that have air conditioners that dump out into the internal space in the summertime, which is actually good. And also, the senior center is another one where it has some heating and cooling problems that, these days, the heat pump technology is very attractive and can be plugged into a number of problem areas, which we hope to do. So those are the big items. The rest is a sort of shopping list of smaller things. The transfer station folks have identified motion-activated lighting, if they'd like, at the entrance to perhaps reduce some pilferage of their recycled material. We've heard about need of thermostats, proventile thermostats at the transfer station and the Folks at the Opera House continue to work on weatherization of the stained glass windows that they have, which is a tough problem, but the talk with the historical resources this summer got touched on that, so they may be able to move forward with some ideas, and we will help as well. The police station would like to, but a few more motion sensors, we did some at the last lighting project, they would like to do some more in that regard. And like to have, if we can find grant money again at the senior center, do an energy audit on that building. It would also be helpful at the public library, even though we know that this replacement of air conditioners is a beneficial project, just an energy audit there would be a helpful thing to finish.
Excuse me, Peter, is the senior center a town-owned building?
Yeah, the building is owned by the town, but it's operated by the Grafton. So the lighting retrofit we did, in fact, needed to be treated specially by that unit. And they need to find the money to do this energy audit, but if we could find some grant money, USDA or other to do that...
I knew there was a combination there.
Yeah. Well, I think I got most of, I may not have all of the items that we're working on, but that, those kinds of things, in addition to the getting more people on the committee and doing outreach to the town in terms of energy. Any questions?
We don't have any, or I don't have any. Do you have any?
My only one question when it comes to the Opera House, the work that you wanted to do, that you've determined not going to do because of the restrictions.
Historical, right.
I assume so there was money that was allocated for that, and you're trying to find where else to use it. Is there a...
No, actually, we're just completing the scope. We're not looking for any new scope.
Okay.
So it will be a smaller job, and the incentive money will be less as well, you know, so it'll shrink together.
Okay.
In terms of money.
I guess that was my question, is there some sort of deadline by which you lose the opportunity to take the full advantage of that grant money that's available to matching...
Right. I don't think so, but we, in fairness, we need to check that to make sure we're still okay. They run on a calendar year, so I believe that as long as we're finishing it in this year, we should be okay, but it's worth checking.
Okay, we don't have any more, but you may get some in the public input session if you don't mind hanging around for a few minutes. Actually, we have no business under the Board of Assessors, which takes us to public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to answer a question about the senior center. The senior center is owned by the town and the senior center has a 20-year lease with the town. I believe this is probably year 16, so the lease. And all the maintenance and upkeep and everything is done by the senior center. The town doesn't really do anything. I don't know if that answers your question or not that you had before.
It sounds like the town puts some money into the senior center though.
Oh, they have, yeah, yeah. And the senior center itself has put a lot of money.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other?
That may require a little bit of clarification. When Peter talked, we had a couple of years ago, a big lighting retrofit, Opera House, fire station.
Yep.
And the senior center was part of that, but separate because the funding line was separate. So, you know, we had the same experts, technical experts that came out and did the evaluation and whatnot, but the funding was completely separate. So the town did not fund for the lighting upgrades of the senior center.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Phil.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the gentleman from the real estate here.
That's Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, okay. Since 1970, I was doing some research for another, another thing I'm working on, but since 1970 to present, Grafton County's population has increased 35,000 people plus. Littleton's population has increased less than 1,000, it's down around 600 in our last 47 years. We've only put in 600 people. Do you contribute any of the housing market, Littleton's housing market, to the fact that we're not bringing in new residents or we're not retaining residents in Littleton?
Well, that's a pretty broad question. I don't, I don't think I could point anything in Littleton's tax platform that's abnormally negative to the town to keep people from moving here. I think if you look at most of the small towns in northern Grafton or the White Mountains, none of us have really, the cause is actually decline in population. So Littleton's been pretty steady. All of the day-to-day support, there'd be the bank and the car dealers and the retail shopping has certainly grown, so the amount of people that we serve in Littleton has grown tremendously over the last 30 or 40 years. And so depending on your product, anywhere from 30,000 to 50,000 people on a day-to-day basis look to Littleton for some sort of service. But population wise, we've, hasn't, hasn't grown tremendously for sure, but I don't think it's because of the tax.
The county has grown tremendously, 35,000 people. So they're moving into some part of the county, but when you go, when you go to big business like, when you got an economic, booming economic like Littleton, you would think people would be moving in here and wanting to stay and live in this area, but we just don't see it.
I don't think I can tell you exactly why that is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Actually, a question of my AT&amp;T users, but the selling of or purchasing of 12 towers is fairly significant for AT&amp;T up here, but is there any in the future, any way to create a matrix on the first year, the second year, the third year and fourth year and how that impacts the North Country as far as the build out? And would you release any type of press releases in the future? I know it's a risky business, you don't want to tell some of the self-coverage and they go down to the, you know, their local corner and they can't, you know, get coverage, but because broadband is really millennial and other generational necessities, it's important for us in the North Country to know when those types of services might be available, you know, in the next four years.
Speaking of, Nick.
Yeah, so great, great question and our plan is to do press releases as we build out the network. We have a, our network folks have put together mapping that is predictable, but until we get the site up and running, we really don't know what that signal's going to look like and we've got to go out and do drive testing and so forth. But as soon as we do the overlay, we've got, we've got to integrate those sites from Northeast wireless network, the one that we closed on last week. When we integrate the network, then we're going to do the overlay when, so that'll be 4G LTE. When that service is available, then we'll absolutely promote it and, you know, do a press release around it and let people know where their service is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
Just one question. When these towers all go up, who is going to maintain them?
So we, the industry has changed over the years. AT&amp;T will maintain the equipment on the towers, but typically the towers won't be owned by AT&amp;T or any of the other providers. So what, what happens is we will go, we've identified X amount of search rings. We want to build a tower here. We find within those locations, within those search rings where we want to be. Most of the time up here, it's brand-new coverage as opposed to existing coverage. So if we can find a tower company to build that for us, we will do that and be their first tenant. If not, AT&amp;T will take ownership. But either way, AT&amp;T will, will maintain the equipment and, you know, our, our building at the, at the bottom and so forth. If we own the tower, we'll be maintaining the tower too, but oftentimes it's a third-party that owns the tower.
Any other public input? Mr. Ward?
When I read the paper that the, the state said that we were about 17% under assessed, I'm not sure if that's the right phrase, but that was phenomenal news. I know everybody who has gotten their tax individual ones have said, well, that's not phenomenal news to me. But when you look at tax base, it's pretty much like a aircraft carrier. Once it tends to go in a direction, it's hard to turn it around. From 1995, we went from a $241 million tax base to 2009, a $794 million. So we had the aircraft carrier going in a great direction. Starting in 2009 through this past year, we went from $794 to $718. So that was heading in the wrong direction. Well, the aircraft carrier now has changed direction and if the 17% based upon the $718, that would be about $122 million, you know, it's never going to be exactly that, change, a positive change in the direction. Now, it's been my personal goal, I guess, I should say personal goal, but something that I'd always like to live long enough before I cash my chips in for us to hit a billion dollars. And we stand a really good chance now that we're going in the right direction to do that because there are some things that haven't happened yet that usually follow. Andy and I, every spring for the last five or 10 years, we'll have a phone call because we'll have a great April or May, lots of activity and then it dies out. Last year, it didn't die out. This year is accelerated as far as the activity. I mean, we also, we talked about the last meeting where, you know, there's 35 different roof jobs going on, there's activity all over, people are feeling good about their real estate, that there's value and that they're improving them. I mean, I just never seen in my almost 67 years as to what's going on. So I think the key thing for every individual who feels that their assessment is out of whack, there's a very, a good way to be able to do it and do it very efficiently, contact Andy or any of the other realtors. They can do a market analysis for you and they can determine whether it's up or down. And the last time the town was assessed, I went to Moen and she did one and I ended up saving $35,000 and went to it, gave them the market analysis. So there's a way to do with it and, but it's got to be statistical driven, it can't be just your opinion. So there's a way to address it on the micro basis. With my assessment, we're on $25,000. I don't stand a, any chance of variance. I'm not even going to waste the time because what's happened, I don't know if it's the last six months of 2017 or the first six months of 2018, but for the third time in, golly, almost 40 years, we've had what I've seen like a market shift, a monumental market shift, about 25,000 and that's an average, not a precise number, for everyone's home increasing in value. It happened in 85, 86, it happened from 2001 to 2002 and it happened over this year. The good news is that is accelerating, so there may be even more appreciation coming. Now, why is appreciation of our real estate values important? We don't have any home building going on and we haven't for a long time. From 2000, 2006, we averaged 29 housing starts. From 2009 through 2017, 18, we've averaged four a year. We have not, and that's not just in Littleton, Andy can talk about, you know, the shorties of the market because we have not been building homes. And what has to happen is our values have to get to a certain point where new home construction can be competitive. We're not at that point yet, but we are finally going in that right direction. So the value is increasing for all of our homes. We don't have any condos in Littleton. Speaking as a 60, 70-year-old, I'd like to be able to have that for an option, but we don't. We've got to get the real estate values up. So this was very good news and when Andrew said that we could be hitting 900 million subject to adjustments, that shows you how much good news is there and hopefully it's going to be sustainable. Now, as I said before, the first run we did was the 13 years, we went in the right direction. The last year, eight years, we went in the wrong direction. I don't know how long the good direction's going to last, but it isn't usually one and done. There's usually a certain amount of momentum that goes with it. So I think we're trending in the right direction for the first time in a long time and I hope everybody will just take a pause, look at their property, get some additional knowledge, information and get work with the town and go from there. One last thing I wanted to pass on that has to do with the health of our wonderful community. Charitable Foundation announced the second phase of scholarships. Kids in Littleton get scholarships at class night and then they're awarded in September, August, September and into early October by the Charitable Foundation. Our Littleton high graduates, the class of 2018, received over $420,000 worth of scholarships. That is a phenomenal amount of support for our kids. Now that being said, we also have very hard-working kids. In 2001, Thomas Walkman Milbrath was one of the members, they created the community service program. Since that program's inception, our kids, year in and year out, day in and day out, have done over 130,000 hours of community service. So they're putting a lot into the town and the town's putting a lot into them. So some people like to, you know, focus on the negatives. I just think that's phenomenal and I think it's important to select them. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public input?
I've got, I'm, I'm sorry, hold on. I've got a question for the gentleman, AT&amp;T. You made, I think, I made a quick note that 0.7% of the population will not be covered after, will be, well, 93, or 92.6, somewhere in that range, that won't have coverage.
9.3 of the.
Right, okay. So 0.7% won't be.
Right.
To come up with a number like that, I'm assuming you've already figured out where you're thinking the cells, towers are going to be and the, and the coverage of all that. And my gut's telling me that that's 0.7% is going to be in the North Country for the most part. That's amounting, I think, I mean, that amounts to some, the North Country population comes to about 25, you know, the 25,000 people that will not be covered or so, it's going to be, it still seems like there's a substantial part of the North Country that won't be covered from a population standpoint. It's not from a statewide standpoint, it's great, but from a population standpoint, it's still a lot of, and I understand there's challenges to it.
Yeah.
So is that, has that planned or the preliminary plans for the towers to, is that already in place and set or is that a moving target?
A little bit of both. So, so that, that figures at the end of five years, which is now three and a half years out. So this, this is the 25-year contract and so we've gotten, we've gotten $6.5 billion from the federal government. The company's going to put in $40 billion over 25 years. We've made a commitment to hit the 99.3% of the population and 96% of the geography at the end of the five years. So we're not done, you know, and I understand, if you look on the map, there is going to be a lot of white space, which means no coverage in the, in this northern section. But we all know that there's not a lot of people that live there, but there are a lot of hikers and snowmobilers and cross-country steers and that kind of thing. But in our business, it's, until you get out there and, and test an area, drive tests, physically go to a location, there's, there's so much that could prevent a signal from getting to a household, we're probably never, with this technology, going to say 100%. So, you know, once we go with satellite or Google balloons or whatever we're going to do 10 years out, we can never say 100%.
Well, I, okay, I appreciate that, I understand that. And I was going to, kind of my next question is, is this a fully a cell system or are you using a combination of cell and satellite? And when, how can the towers go away and just use satellite?
Yeah, so, so I don't know. I don't know when, when they can go away. My, and I don't know of any technology down the road that will, that will get rid of all of the towers. So that's anybody's guess and the technology thing changes so quickly. We, we, it's a 4G LTE network, so it's, so it's a wireless network. It's a, you know, today with 4G LTE, you're looking at, again, depending on the location, how far you are from the tower, how many people are using the network, you can get as high as 25, 26, 35 or 40 megabytes per second. So that's pretty fast for wireless. When we go to 5G, which is the next phase, and we, both AT&amp;T and Verizon have rolled out 5G just recently, you know, when will that get here? You know, 4G LTE has been out there for probably six years and there are some sets of, sites up here that don't have it yet. They will have it, they'll all have it. So, and those speeds will go to 100 megabytes per second or higher. So that's the technology. I don't know, we could get off track here, we've got lots of new technologies that we're testing, including wherever there's electrical wires. We could put in antennas on those electrical wires, which will broadcast a broadband signal. That's something we're testing this year in Georgia and in Mexico and that could be a viable way to get broadband in every highway throughout New Hampshire without any towers. So kind of long answer to your question, but it's hard to say.
And I appreciate that. I know it's not an easy, it's not an easy task. I fully appreciate that, but I, I just want to say that it's hugely important. You know, the challenge is especially, I mean, we talked about Littleton's economy's doing really great and it's, it's a great place to be. I choose to, to live here. In my business, I'm, I'm competing with companies in Boston and have, and when, when we had, it, it just changed our ability to compete with those types of companies when we got high speed, when we got fiber and it just, the technology put us more on a level playing field. And I think one of the biggest challenges for, for Northern New Hampshire, when you start talking about economic challenges, that's a big part of it.
Right.
And if, and if we can overcome that, then people, like in, in my case where we, we are able to easily compete now, technology's not holding us back anymore. And 20 years ago it was, it was tough to compete with those companies that had addresses in Boston. It's not anymore. Of course, they're moving out of Boston because they don't want to pay Boston prices, but nonetheless, that's, you know, I choose to live here and I'm able to compete with, with those companies and that's a real challenge for much of the North Country.
Yeah. No, that, that's why I wanted to be here and, you know, I'm happy to see public safety is here, but we wanted to start talking to the business community, the chambers, because it's a big deal and we're extremely excited about it and, you know, this area is going to look a lot different in, in three, four, five years. is going to look a lot different in, in three, four, or five years.
Peter's got on a skiffed agenda item, which is our October meeting date is Columbus Day. So we have to decide what to do, and once we think we've decided, the public has an opportunity to comment. I would suggest the next day, Tuesday, which I believe would be the ninth, although I'm open to other suggestions.
I, I can, my, my son's in college, he's coming home that weekend for the first time. I can't wait to see him, and that's the day I'm bringing him back. But if I have to, my wife can take him, it's not a big deal. If we could do it on Wednesday that week, it would work better for me, but.
Let me take a quick look. So once it would be the tenth, then.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the tenth, how about you?
It works?
Okay, then let's go for the tenth, and we will open that up to public comment in case we, something's going on that we've missed. Is there any other public comment on any subject from the agenda?
I'd just like to add one item from our presentation, which you didn't specifically mention. As I'm sure you know, the recycling market is very depressed right now. Brian Patton has some really good ideas on how he can cope with that. It might involve a little bit of expenditure, but I think it's worth investing, so I hope if, when he brings it up, we'll get a dookie solution.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
December two thousand and five, at the diner, Senator Greg was here, and he used to come here twice a month, uh, twice a year. And the one thing we talked about at that time was the lack of broadband capacity for our region. Verizon had announced that they were leaving, and they did, and so we were facing having less. Scotty, you were involved in the Link project to expand broadband capacity in northern Grafton and all the co-ops. That project took a while, and then SNS came in and really took it to another level. The historic importance of what was presented today, as far as the investment occurring here, is, it's, it's unbelievable when you compare to what we were facing in December of two thousand and five, because what we said then is true now. No business is going to relocate to an area with less broadband than where they came from. And for us, having a competitive economy, we've got to have the services that AT, AT&amp;T, and hopefully the other competitors can bring in. This is a big deal.
Yep. You're absolutely correct, and Senator Greg helped us get some of the federal funding to start the Link project. Any other public comment? Hearing's ended. Now this meeting adjourned. Thank you.